Good morning, everybody. I want to welcome to the July 10th Board of Commissioners meeting. And this morning, I get the honor of leading us in the invocation, and then we have Officer Alice Bartlett to lead us in the place of allegiance. So those who are willing and able, please stand. Heavenly Father, welcome. Welcome into our house, your house, your people. May we always remember that through the sacrifice of your Son, Jesus Christ, that he freed us from all our sins, so we may go forward every day and use all the skills that you gave us and all our talents to serve you. May what happens today in this house reflect the love that you want us all to share with each other in our opinions and how we go forth to serve you. May the actions of this board reflect the wisdom that you've given us and experience that you've shown us to lead the people in a way that you would reflect your will. We ask for lift up in your hands spoken and unspoken concerns, and also a special blessings on those who are the uniformed protect our freedoms. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, Officer.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, we have a number of presentations this morning. So we'll start with customer service, right? All right, Customer Service Awards. Kristen? Yes. I just saw, you want us all to join you down here, or you want to do the... Well, we can go down there and join County Manager, and then we can...
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Special Guests, and County Manager. On behalf of the Customer Service Council, it is my privilege to present our first and second quarter winners of the Cobb County Customer Service Excellence Award. Today, we will recognize three employees who go beyond the call of duty when it comes to providing customer service excellence. John McFarland is our first quarter winner. He works in our Information Services Department. John is receiving this award because of his willingness to jump into projects. Recently, community development had a new security cameras installed. At the last minute, the vendor needed information from the communications team. Having worked on similar projects in the past, John was able to guide the vendor to a configuration that worked best with the new system. This enabled the project to quickly come to completion. John also found a way to help 911 call center increase bandwidth from their main center to their backup center. By routing the two centers through DOT's fiber, John helped the county save $40,000 with no recurring costs. John, thanks for scoring one for customer service. We are proud that you're on our team. Our next two honorees are for the second quarter. They're both, they both work for our police department. First up is Connie Burson. Connie holds the administrative two position at Precinct Five. She was selected for the award because of her willingness to step in and help, even if it is not in her or the department's job responsibilities. She handled sales of cancer awareness bracelets for a fundraiser the sheriff's office presented, and she's actively sought training that will help her better assist with the demands of the precinct. Additionally, Connie serves on the Camp Puzzled Board, coordinates officers attending Cops for Kids at Calvary's Children's Home. Thanks for all you do as part of Team Cobb. Connie, you score big for our team. Sergeant Jeff Tatro is our final award recipient today. Jeff oversees the police department's Community Affairs Unit. He's created Coffee with Your Cops, attends homeless pet clubs to reach Cobb County's youth, and he interacts with the kids through the Cool Kids Committee. He has also held individual active shooter trainings with business owners in the area and created a new youth police academy based on the Citizens Academy. Keep up the great work, Sergeant. Thanks for being above par in customer service excellence. Please give these outstanding employees another round of applause.
Congratulations.
Okay, next on the agenda are the public hearings. So the first one, so I get Bill up here, is to conduct our first public hearing on the 2018 proposed tax increase as defined by Georgia law. So Bill, I'll let you give me some comments before I open up the floor for the comments for the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We'll try to be brief in our presentation. I do have a special slide in here just for you, so I hope you appreciate it.
This is my day.
There you go. There's your famous buckets. So we made sure to leave those in there from last year.
Could you frame that for me?
You know what? We will. We'll do that for you, sir. Promise. All right, so this is our first public hearing on our millage, well, first of three. On this slide here, we have the 2017 millage and what was being proposed for the 2018. The only two that you see should, that are changing is the general fund is we're proposing a 1.7 mil increase. And then you'll notice that the fire fund, we're actually proposing a .1 decrease. So the total millage rate compared to FY17, which was 9.85, is being proposed at 11.45 mils. Okay. And there we go. And then this is just a brief five-year history of Cobb County's millage, and this is total millage compared to Fulton, DeKalb, and Gwinnett. So again, we're proposing an 11.45 millage in 18. And if you can, if you look across there, even we are still, would still be two mils less than the next closest county.
Just leave that, go back and, so just, because there's some footnotes down here, I think it's important for the public to look at those, both here and those that are at home. Because people like to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. And I think it's important that they look at these footnotes to make sure that, you know, that there are some differences. And I think it's, they should, they should be made aware of what those are. And the slide does that great, superbly.
And that's an excellent point, sir. And we tried to compare these to put the same services together. So when we're showing the total county millage, we're comparing against Fulton, DeKalb, and Gwinnett's millage for the same services.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Whoops, sorry. Okay, and then this is just a brief history of the county's overall millage rate. So we've broken this down between the general fire and debt service. And you can see back from 2008, this was the 9.6. And then you can see where we bumped up in 2011 due to the recession. And we scaled it back down into 2017, or 2016, 2017, and now the proposed increase of 1.7 mils. But you do see the breakout. One of the things I do want to point out is you can see the debt service, that is tied directly to our general obligation bonds. So as our obligations are paid off, that would come down in the future. We, by law, cannot collect more taxes than we have obligations. Moving on, this is just a brief history of our digest. And you can see in 2018, we are at an all-time high of, right there. And then what we also want to point out is, I believe Chairman, you have a very good chart of this. This reflects the population growth as well. So in 2018, despite having an all-time high digest, we also have an all-time high population. Okay. And this is a really important slide here. I know in the paper, and we've talked about this, we had 9.14% growth in digest in 2018. What I want to remind everybody is that we do budget a growth in digest. So we do budget 4.5% growth in digest, and we based our budget on 18, based on the previous year millage of 6.76. So we did grow beyond what we budgeted. But again, that's the idea of a budget. It's a conservative budget with reflecting conservative growth. We did have a fantastic year in that regard. And then you can just see the overall, the gross versus the total digest. Okay. And the last few slides here, I want to call, I wanted to bring these to your attention because these are special service districts. Just to kind of give you an idea of how well these special service districts are performing. I know one of the areas we always like to talk about is the Cumberland Special Service District. I have another slide with the Six Flags Special Service District. Both are equally doing extremely well. The 2018 proposed millage rate would leave the special service district's millage as this, as they were in 2017. But just take a look at the growth in digest. You're looking at $374 million in growth in the Cumberland Special Service District alone. And then in Six Flags, again, you're seeing an all-time high in growth in this service district as well. And again, we're proposing to leave this millage rate as it was in 2017. So this one grew by 37 million compared to 20 million in 17 and 10 million in 18. So all of our service districts, as well as the county, you're seeing growth across the board. Okay, and then just want to run these down real quick. These are our public hearings. So obviously, we have the one today. Our second one will be on July 17th at 6:30. Our final one will be on July 25th at 7:00 PM. And we're asking that the board adopt the millage on July 25th after the public hearing. So with that, sir, I ask you to open the public hearing.
Okay, just to give you the public hearing guidelines, there are unlimited numbers of speakers. So whoever, we'll be done when we're done. Each speaker gets three minutes. And just want you to remember that we're actually going to have two public hearings today. One's about the budget and one's about the millage rate. And I know sometimes it's hard, you know, not to comment one without the other. So I'm going to give you a lot of latitude in your comments. Just remember that if you're speaking about the budget and you decided to address about the millage rate, you've probably taken some, including the effectiveness of your comments because you're talking about a subject that we're not addressing at that public hearing. But having said that, the floor is yours. And I now open up this, this public hearing on proposed tax structure for 2018. And with that, I invite the first person to the podium. And then what I ask you to do is just come on up, and then I can guarantee you, you'll all get to speak. So please don't come and stand in the center because it blocks the view of those that are behind you. So with that, I invite the first person to the podium. Just let us know who you are and where you live. And I welcome your comments, as does the board. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm June Van Brackel. I'm the Board President and Chair of the Senior Citizens Council of Cobb County. Inasmuch that there were no provisions for a daytime hall, town hall meeting to accommodate seniors, taxpayers, and voters, the senior council conducted its own town hall meeting via survey. We have received 180 responses, so we're talking for our constituents. We, our findings show that more than two-thirds of all respondents were in favor of raising the military to improve the quality of life. More than 70% of our respondents use Cobb County parks, libraries, senior centers, and 76% of them use Cobb Senior Service Centers. Almost three-quarters would not be willing and unsure or unlikely to pay an annual fee to use Cobb Senior Service Facilities. More than 90% own their own homes, and more than half of them lived in Cobb County for more than 25 years. It should not be surprising that the seniors who use senior service facilities, they may not be baby boomers, but they're retired 65, the silent generation as I am. Many seniors who were financially comfortable and independent during their working years have found in retirement many unexpected challenges, both financially and physically. For Cobb County seniors, senior services provide enrichment and often the only outlet for socializing and connecting to the outside world. Now, almost two-thirds of this group has stopped attending the senior centers. We understand that the revenue from the $60 senior tax hardly exceeded $100,000, which apparently was not enough to staff senior services with a director or other pertinent staff. The millage rate has not increased in many years. Cobb population has steadily increased. Look around us. There is new housing construction in almost every other block. Our senior community has multiplied twofold. Independent 55-plus communities and assisted living facilities are built in every Cobb town and city. Our public services are not keeping up with the population and growth of seniors and other groups. The shortage of funds affect all senior services and all services for the community at large. We need and we deserve better. So therefore, the senior council supports the millage tax. And here's a copy of our survey.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today on an issue that affects every taxpayer, every homeowner in this county. My name's Alicia Adams, and I am a 14-year homeowner and resident of Cobb County. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Georgia Chapter of Americans for Prosperity and our 80,000 members, our activists, many of whom are here from Cobb County. And they're here with me to urge you to reject the 1.7 mil property tax increase that's included in the 2019 budget. The proposed property tax hike would cost county residents millions of dollars in additional property taxes next year. Americans for Prosperity understands the importance of property taxes to fund local projects such as roads and schools. However, the additional tax dollars being proposed would not be used for that purpose. And while the cost of the Braves stadium continues to impact every fiscal decision that our county makes for the foreseeable future, we agree that Chairman Boyce's past statements that this is not the sole cause of our county's financial woes. There have been a number of Cobb County fiscal irresponsible decisions that have made, starting in 2017, proposing and enacting massive tax breaks to large companies, including $35 million to Tyler Perry's production companies for holding their jet at the municipal airport, $35 million tax break to Kroger to move their location just a couple thousand yards down the road, and proposed $35 million tax break to ThyssenKrupp, a German elevator company. So rather than looking at taxpayers to bail them out of the financial decisions, this commission, instead of threatening to close Cobb County parks, senior centers, and animal shelters, should look to rein in out-of-control spending and reduce the corporate welfare it provides in the form of massive tax breaks to big businesses. Homeowners and all citizens of Cobb County have been taxed enough. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Mike Darish. I'm just a resident, been here since 1978. Really, I just have questions in two areas. Are questions permitted?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but if you hang around, excuse me, sir. If you hang around during the break, we're happy to answer the questions for you, okay?
My name is Peggy Poole, and I live in Marietta, Georgia. I love living in Cobb County. In 2004, the millage rate on my house was 6.85. This was during good times and before the recession. In 2016, the millage rate was lowered to 6.66, even though it was well-known that this would mean there would not be enough money to pay for county expenses. I am paying less money to the Cobb County General Fund now than I was in 2004. Our population is growing, not because of mandated or essential services, but because of the desired services, those like our public library. Our public libraries, to me, are not just desired, they are essential. As a teacher, I feel very strongly about that. I have done some research on my own. Did you know that Cobb County is the third highest population in the state of Georgia? Cobb County is the fifth wealthiest county in our state. And did you know that we are 21st on the list of millage rate prices? There are counties way poorer than us that have a much higher millage rate. The amount of the proposed 1.7 millage rate increase over the course of a year will cost to the average homeowner a total of about what it is to take one trip to the grocery store. I love living in Cobb County. And I love living here because of the quality of life and all of the perks that we have living here. If we do not pass this 1.7 millage rate, our quality of life is going to go down. We are not going to have all of these wonderful things that we have now. And our population may not increase at the wonderful rate that was just shown up here. Please vote yes for the 1.7 millage rate. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Shelley Calico, and I'm a West Cobb resident. I'm here on behalf of the Save Cobb Libraries Organization. We have about 6,000 voices between our change.org petition and two respective Facebook pages. And I'm here to encourage you to vote in favor of the millage rate increase. We believe that the principle of having a local library, not a regional library, is the bedrock to Cobb. Today, we speak for all populations in Cobb, the toddlers who come for storytime, the pre-K students who get ready for kindergarten, the fourth grader who just finds a new book series that he loved, or the eighth grader who discovers a science fiction series that keeps him hooked over the long summer. We speak for families, singles, and those who can't be here today because they can't drive. And I also teach in Cobb County schools and some of our Title I schools. This is a reality. The dad takes the car, the mom can't get to, can't go anywhere other than to the bus stop. We also speak for those who use their local library as their second home. We speak for adults. We speak for seniors. We speak for the poor, the rich, and the middle class. The library has no barriers. It is an open house to all, and everyone is welcome. And as such, we implore the Board of Commissioners to raise the millage rate so not only that we would not lose our beloved libraries, that we return the hours to what they were previously. While interacting with the 6,000 voices, no one has ever said that we need less libraries. And Cobb cherishes these sacred spots, our libraries, our art centers, our pools, our aquatic centers, and our parks. We want to make sure that we are, that we are not only thinking of keeping our libraries, but thinking how we can better them and how can we make them five-star for Cobb citizens. And I encourage you to vote for the millage rate increase.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Megan Whitehead. I am the program coordinator with Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation. We are a statewide foundation, but we are here in support of Keep Cobb Beautiful, one of our affiliates. And we're speaking here today to promote the voting of yes for the millage rate. The Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation would like to thank Cobb County for its longstanding commitment to keep Cobb beautiful in the KCB program. With support, KCB's staff and volunteers, volunteer board have created an affiliate that is truly one of the most accomplished in the country, consistently winning state and national awards each year. In addition, the program has been a major benefit for Cobb County citizens, leveraging public dollars with private resources to maintain and even expand services during difficult budget times. Keep Cobb Beautiful's efforts are highly visible and make a tangible difference to residences. Adopt a Mile and other cleanup programs, which engage businesses, civic groups, and residences in stewarding public spaces, have continued to grow over the past several years with KCB. Additionally, the Keep Cobb Beautiful program has expanded public services at no cost to local government by working with private industry to expand countywide recycling participation. This past year, Keep Cobb Beautiful won the first place in many categories, including waste reduction and recycling due to programs such as the Household Hazardous Waste Event. And even elected official, Joanne Burrell, won Elected Official of the Year. So congratulations on that award. There are only, these are only a few examples, but the ability to keep the Keep Cobb Beautiful program to provide these kind of cost-saving, cost savings and liaison efforts within the community depends on the millage and depends on continued county support for the program. While we recognize that Cobb County is under physical constraints and that this millage is a part of that discussion, we encourage you to consider the many benefits and cost savings associated with the program and continue through the, through the millage rate, continue to fund Keep Cobb Beautiful. On a state level, we truly appreciate the work of Keep Cobb Beautiful and thank the county for your continued support of the overall Keep America Beautiful system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Carol Brown.
Good morning.
Can't hurt neighbors. I'll be very brief. A few weeks ago, we launched a petition, and we're still working on it in support of raising the millage. And it's greetings, Cobb Commissioners. Please vote for a millage increase on July 25th and save our county. Your vote to support the increase will ensure that residents continue to enjoy the parks, libraries, senior centers, and quality of life that has made Cobb County a good place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Abby Schiffman. I'm a resident in East Cobb. I've been a resident here in Cobb County for 29 years and a homeowner for 24 years. 1.7 mils for me, according to the Tax Assessor's Office, is $9.50 each month. I don't drink coffee, so I can't equate it to that. But I know it's a little more than a dozen Krispy Kreme glazed donuts or one small meal out. I urge everyone who has not gone to the chairman's presentation, please go to cobbcounty.org. please go to CobbCounty.org and watch the presentation. Call the tax assessor's office and ask them how a 1.7 mil increase will affect you personally. Do not rely on much of the information you may be reading by misinformed people on social media. Your taxes are not going to be raised by 34% as I read by someone yesterday. I am the chair of the Library Board of Trustees. Our libraries have had to endure multiple cuts since 2008, not only by the county, but by the state, who redid their formula and have cut our materials budget. And now we must rely on the county budget even more. We have had positions vacated that we have not been able to fill. As you know, we have decreased many library hours, as well as our part-time hours for our part-time employees have been decreased. The county has mandatory services that need to be upkept and to catch up. Pug book safety is one. But our desired services are what makes this county what it is. Last night at the forum, there was a woman who moved here from Sandy Springs, who moved here for the lower taxes and is in favor of the millage increase at her age, which she was just happy that it wasn't going to affect her school board that she doesn't get to pay anymore. I ask each Commissioner to listen to their constituents, take a poll, a survey, record the numbers. Do what your constituents want, not what you may feel is what you want. You need to really listen to your constituents. If this rate increase does not pass, there will be cuts. I urge the citizens to call the tax assessor's office and find out exactly how this increase will affect you personally. Remember, it is only the general fund, not the entire tax bill. So I thank you very much. I hope you will listen to your constituents. And the majority of them, I have heard, are very in favor of this, as I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to talk, to address the issue on the tax proposal for 2019?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joe Webb. And I oppose the tax increase. I know you all sharpened your knives and gone after the budget and tried to reduce it. I still think there's more cuts that could be made. I have a couple pet peeves. One is Cobb County needs to stop abating the tax digest. And so far this year, y'all have abated $361 million in taxes that's taken off the tax roll. I know that's, to a lot of you, that seems insignificant, but over time, that really adds up to a tremendous amount of money. Also, I'm speaking on behalf of veterans and senior citizens that we have lived our lives, we worked hard, we saved, and everything just keeps going up, up, up. And we need to stop this tax increase. And Cobb County needs to tighten their belt just a little bit more and reduce spending. I know there's cuts that could be made and we really need to work on that and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, see no further. Oh, come, yes ma'am, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ellie Groatz and I live in East Cobb. I moved here 20 years ago because it was such a wonderful county to live in. I liked the extra services we had. And I was very surprised when I saw that they were going to reduce the millage rate a few years ago. There's been a growth in the population, so there will be increasing costs. We know this. And it seems to me, and I think Bob Ott, who's unfortunately not here, he agreed that this was an error to actually reduce the millage rate a few years ago. So to correct an error, you go back, you raise the millage rate back up to where it was and above to account for the additional costs due to inflation and the growth of population. So I support the 1.7% increase. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Pamela Riordan. I speak as number of wolves, but I live in East Cobb and I'm a Realtor. And yes, we have low tax, property taxes in Cobb County. And yes, when I'm working with people, they will say, whoa, why does Cobb County have a lower tax rate? Let's look there instead of Fulton County. But let me, let everyone here and whoever's watching understand that no, this isn't a very big increase to the general fund tax that you have to input, but yes, you're going to get hit with a huge tax bill. And that's because our property evaluations have gone up a lot. 9%, 10% over the year before, another 10% from the year before. So you're kidding yourself if you think you can afford the $9 a month because unless you're over 62, you're going to get hit big time. And so this coupled with the other, that's not just the only thing. There are places in this budget, they have done a line-by-line item increase just because they need or say they have an increase. There is not a need for an increase. We do not need to subsidize Kroger. We do not need to subsidize people who are not taking their sick leaves that work for the county and then when they retire, get five years of pay because they haven't had vacations either. In corporate America, we need to look at what they do and they run their organizations to cut the fat because we haven't done that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Mrs. Bonner.
Chairman, good morning. I didn't come to speak this morning, but just sitting here listening, I had to get up and speak. I am East Cobb. I've been in East Cobb for over 40 years. I am a taxpayer. So I wanted to come and say today that I certainly know that we will not enjoy East Cobb as we have in the past if we do not have this increase. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonner. Always good to have you. Okay, I think everyone who's supposed to want to speak on this issue should want to close this public hearing on the tax proposal for 2018 and then we'll go into our next public hearing, which is on the budget. So Bill, I'll bring you back to the podium.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. This is our second public, well, first public hearing on the budget, second public hearing of the day. So I just want to go over the dates real quick. The budget was advertised in the MDJ on July 9th. This is our first public hearing on the 10th. Our second public hearing will be on July 17th at 6:30. And then our third and final public hearing and adoption will be on July 25th at 7:00 p.m. Okay, as a part of all of our budget presentations, what we do is we show any positions that are being created. One of the things that I know the chairman talked about in his town hall was the emphasis on public safety. So I wanted to point out that in the general fund, we are adding 30 public safety positions, 20 DOT positions, five positions for elections, and four for fleet. So the emphasis being on public safety and DOT in this case. Okay, and this is just a continued list of those positions. One of the things that I do want to call to your attention, and this was discussed at the work session yesterday, a part of the DOT, which is the top three positions that you see here, are our crew leaders, which are four, equipment operators, and crew workers. This is to go back to a crew per each commissioned district. This was brought up yesterday. We still have money in the budget for the right-of-way mowing and this is to cover the overlap as we begin to fill these positions and then purchase the equipment. So then, once we do that, staff will take care of 100% of the county. It'll all be internal versus external. So, but 19 does have an overlap period, which is why you still see right-of-way mowing and maintenance in, in the budget. Okay, moving on, we have some labor distributions. These are any positions that are shared between multiple funds. So you can see the breakdown of these positions here. General fund absorbs 45%, FIRE 45, and 911. Again, these are all public safety-related positions. Okay, and moving on to some of our other funds, the FIRE District Fund has its own millage itself supporting. We have 36 positions. This is part of their five-year plan as they, as they presented last year. And the reduction in the millage rate as being proposed, which is a 0.1 reduction, does continue to support that five-year plan. Okay, additional funds, we have transit, which is asking for six new positions. Streetlight District Two, Engineering One positions. And the 911 is asking for six positions, again, all public safety.
Okay, but I thought yesterday we agreed we were going to hold off on the transit until after the transit study.
That is the recommendation and that, that is what we are moving forward with. We wanted to make sure the presentation was the same, but I'm glad you brought that up. What we talked about yesterday was having discussion on the transit positions and possibly holding those until the study.
And the purpose was, is we want to see what the transit study and the survey produced before we come back to see, make sure that these positions are validated.
Yes, sir.
That's the concern. It wasn't meant to delete them. We just want to make sure that, that, that the analysis that comes out of the study and the survey, in fact, validate these, these positions right here.
Yes, sir, and you're absolutely correct. And the reason we left those on there is to make sure that this presentation coincided with the work session, which coincided with the ad we placed in the MDJ. But those will be removed and up for discussion before we move into the next public hearing. All right.
Chairman, I'm sorry. I had a different impression from our discussion yesterday that we weren't going to discuss these, but not necessarily remove them, particularly without discussing it with Commissioner Ong.
Commissioner Ong.
Commissioner Ong and the transit manager.
Right, and that's, 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 you're right, we're waiting for, we're not to come back. We have two more public hearings. We'll be able to discuss that. And so we're going to leave them on here for right now, okay? But again, it's a two-part part. First of all, Commissioner Ong, since he's the liaison for DOT, he has to weigh in on this. And he's not here today and I want to make sure he has his voice to be heard. And secondly, as I said earlier, we want to make sure that whatever we do fund coincides that comes out of the transit study and the survey. So the study may validate all these positions, I don't know. But the intent's not to delete these positions, just to leave them there for now. And then we'll have the opportunity over the next two public hearings to talk about them, to see what we want to do with.
Okay, and I believe a lot of this should depend on the department, the agency.
Sure.
And, and their feedback.
Absolutely, yes.
And Commissioner, just Commissioner Cupid, to address that concern, we again are pulling the, the request justification from CCT and we're going to provide that to all the board members before the next public hearing. Okay, and then we have some additional personnel reallocations. This is where we've moved some positions. We're moving to solution analysts from the FIRE Fund to the IS. This is to help with the technical recruiting aspect of these positions. We were doing something similar and we actually did something similar in finance this year. We're also moving the safety village from the general fund to be fully supported by the FIRE Fund. And then a few years ago, we adjusted solid waste where we have some parks workers that are performing solid waste duties. So we're moving those from the general fund to solid waste to be funded out of the solid waste fund. And then we have the differential pay for public safety and sheriff incentive pay, incentive slash retention pay. And we have our certified training officers for the two positions for 911.
And could you go ahead and when you put this slide on the website, just spell out CTO?
Yes, sir, we can do that.
And, and make sure that you put an asterisk with the county clerk's phone number in case people have any questions about it.
And thank you again, Pam, for that yesterday. Appreciate it. Okay, all right, so this is the summary of the general fund. You can see the adopted 18 budget was 403 million. The proposed 19 budget is 453 million. This is based on the 1.7 mil increase that we talked about in the first public hearing. And it does include a growth in the digest of 4.5%. Again, a conservative number as we move forward. We work with, we'll work with the tax commissioner or tax assessor's office as we go through the year to modify any projections as we see fit, as they get more and more, more and more data. And obviously, the 19 digest will be based on the assessment value of Jan. 1, so we'll continue to update those numbers as we move forward. Okay, and then this is the, as the chairman said, the, the general fund's universe broken down between mandated, essential, and desired. You can see the mandated is roughly 40, just over 40%, which is 183 million. The essential services is actually just under 39% and change, which is 179 million, and desired is 91 million, which is 20%. Okay, and then this is just a quick revenue breakdown compared to 18 adopted versus 19 proposed. We've already talked about the property taxes, which does include the millage rate increase as well as a digest increase. As you move down these, you will see that there are some significant bumps. This is, and one of those is license and permitting. This is our business license, business licenses. We implemented some new fees a few, last year, I believe, and we've just been monitoring those fees and the collection of those fees. So we adjusted the budget to reflect the actual collections. And then one of the areas that I want to call to your attention is in under miscellaneous revenue, you'll see a decrease of 12%. What we've done here is the parks has cell tower monies that they collect that are designated specifically for playgrounds, tennis, and capital equipment. And we pulled those out of the budget because those are restricted for that specific purpose. So that way, we don't adopt a budget, let's say it's a million dollars, and they don't collect the full amount. What we do is we appropriate it as they collect it, so it's reserved for the specific thing. So we know that they only spend what they have available to them. But the overall increase again is 12.58%. And then on the other side of the coin, we have our expenditures, which is obviously again a 12.8, or 12.58% increase. The big line that will stand out here is the capital. It's a 3,401% increase over last year because we basically didn't have any capital last year. In 2018, the only capital we had was some hot water pipe replacement for the sheriff's office. The 2019 is to restore a capital plan. So of the 14 million, you have 8.6 for vehicles. You have 3.1 for body cameras and an additional $2 million for capital replacement. That, that is the most significant increase that we see there. And then personnel, most of that increases, again, the positions that we've already discussed, as well as increases to healthcare and pension. The operating budgets are relatively flat and the debt service is relatively flat as well. Okay, and I will address the contingencies here briefly. Contingencies for the general fund is roughly $14 million. We've broken them down, as you see. We have public safety for, we have, as part of public safety plus up, we're asking for $15 million. Of that, 4.9 is loaded in contingency for the sheriff's office and 3.1 is loaded in for police. And then you go down, you have shift differential education pay, Board of Commissioners' undesignated contingency. This is the standard $1 million that we set aside specifically for the board to use on case-by-case basis or if a special needs arise.
Yeah, could you give us some examples of what, what, what those might have been in the past?
Sure, for, for undesignated contingency, this could be, we do have a storm debris contingency, but if you have severe storms, you could address those. If you have something that breaks down during the year that you need to address that is not currently budgeted, that's what this money can be used for. So this is, this would be no different than any agenda item where you wanted to either appropriate fund balance, but this is there specifically for your budget during the year. If you use it, you use it. If you don't, it stays in contingency. But it has to come back before the board to be approved as a case-by-case basis to even begin to use that money. So the board has to approve any uses.
Did we use it last year?
As of now, I believe we've only used a little bit in 18. And then typically what we do, it's at the board's discretion whether you want to do fund balance appropriation, depending on where our fund balance levels are, or undesignated contingency. Typically, what we've seen in the past is you use the undesignated contingency more when the fund balance levels are low. And when the fund balance levels are high, you typically use the fund balance.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and then we have, we go ahead and list everything out here. We also put in there the $800,000 for the library restoration hours. And this is a three-year plan to restore libraries to pre-recession levels. And then you can see the other items. We do have some storm debris and death penalty contingencies of 550,000. And then there's a, there's a few other items on there, but the one item that I do want to bring your attention to is the one-third payment on the stadium infrastructure as part of the plan. When we paid out the money for the infrastructure to the Braves, there was some, there was about $490,000 that we had to pay out of the general fund and we agreed to pay that over a three-year period. This is the second payment of that. So our final payment will be done in October of the following year. And then we will have met that obligation. Okay. All right, and then this is the stadium bond debt service. This is the breakdown of how we anticipate the monies to come in to pay for that stadium, stadium debt. The Braves, 6.1 million will be continuation through the whole bond process. The CSSD1, which is the $3 room night hotel tax fee, we were able to reduce that this year and provide additional money to Cobb Travel and Tourism. And the, the reason we were able to do that is we've seen significant growth in the Cumberland Special Service District Two, which is the property tax component of that, as well as the hotel motel county-wide tax. The county's general, or the general fund rental car tax is relatively flat over where it's been in the previous year. And we were able to reduce the general fund property tax component from 6.4 down to 5.5 million due to the growth in the other areas. Okay, and this is just a quick summary of all the funds that the county has, the operating funds that we have, and again, General Funds at the top of the list, a 12.58 percent increase. The Claims Funds, this is our healthcare self-insurance funds. As healthcare costs go up, this goes up as well. One of the other items that I want to bring to your attention is the debt service. This went down 22 percent because we only have one bond outstanding, which is our parks bonds, which we have just under five years remaining on. So, we can only legally collect what we have as outstanding debt, so this has to balance out. Some of the funds that you'll see have an asterisk by them, they have some fund balance appropriations, as well as the ones with the pound sign, or you'll actually, those receive General Fund subsidies. So the ones that receive General Fund subsidies on this slide is the parking deck, still about a $300,000-plus subsidy. We will be continuing to look at that as we go through the summer months and see how the new revenue structure and fee structure comes into play. And the bottom two lines, again, I want to call your attention to those. We talked about them briefly in the millage rate public hearing, CSSD-2, property tax component, and the SFSSD, which is the Six Flags Special Service District. Those are increases based on digest growth. Okay.
Say we have five years left on the parks bond?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. Yep, I know that was a question asked yesterday, so we wanted to make sure we had that for you, and so that is the only bond we have outstanding today. Commissioner.
Do we know how much sooner that would be paid off if we kept the millage at the .13 for the parks bond?
It's going to depend on digest growth as we move forward, but we've seen good digest growth in that. The rollback rate for the debt fund was less than, less than a, what, .001 mils this year, so it wasn't a significant rollback. We couldn't, when we typically do a rollback, we either do, you know, .1 or .01. We couldn't even go to that full rollback rate this year, but as we, if we leave that alone, as what's currently being proposed, that'll allow the county to put that money in, into the Georgia Fund One, earn a little bit of interest, because we are restricted on how much we can earn, but that will grow and reduce the burden on the taxpayers as we move forward. So, we do anticipate an early payoff of that, and we'll just have to keep you updated as the digest goes for those next couple of years. I would say, next year or two, we can give you a really good idea. We could actually work with you as a rough estimate this year and give you an idea where we'd be. Okay?
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Excuse me, could you?
Sorry, yes, sir.
Explain to the public what the Law Library Fund is for?
I'm sorry, can you say?
The Law Library Fund, could you explain that for everybody?
Yes, the Law Library Fund is, this is based on fees that are, this is tied directly to fees that are collected through the courts, and we fund the law books that are available to the public out of this fund.
Does that cost us $500,000 a year?
It's, it's for the public, and I believe, and Buddy, correct me, is it judges as well?
It's mainly for the public.
For the public, yes, sir.
I understand that, but it would seem to me it would be like a capital investment, and then every five or six years, you re-change the books.
They definitely have to be updated, but yes, sir, we do spend that full amount. And actually, it's gone down over the last several years as we've moved forward. And as a part of that, we did use some money, I believe, out of the Library Fund for the, to help supplement the creation of the new Law Library as well.
And these are funded through fees?
Yes, they're tied to the fines and forfeitures, there's a fee tacked on to the fines and forfeitures that goes directly into the Law Library Fund.
So, okay, so this is a holding place, but we don't really, it doesn't impact the General Fund?
This does not impact the General Fund whatsoever. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, and then, we also have the business-type funds. This is our golf course, solid waste, transit, and water funds. Again, the solid waste fund and transit fund do receive subsidies from the General Fund, and right now, we do have the water fund is using appropriating fund balance or retained earnings as we move forward. I know that is an item on the agenda for today to consider water fees. If that is approved, this number would change in future public hearings. Okay, all right, and our last slide here is our capital projects. The stadium capital maintenance, you can see last year was 2.4 million, it's going to go to 2.5. Again, the county only puts in half of this, the Braves put in the other half. We hold the money until there's a need arises that all three parties, including the county, the gallery authority, and the Braves, all agree that those monies can be used for, for capital maintenance on the stadium. So, we do have a schedule that goes out, and I believe it will escalate to $1.5 million a year, with slow incremental step-ups, but again, this is, the county's responsible for half of this amount. And then our capital projects funds, this is where we put any monies that other funds contribute into for long-term projects that are not included in SPOST. One of the large increases that you see here is due to the Unified Court Case Management System, which we're going to be paying into for the next several, like, three to four years. That's where you see the plus-up from the 8.8 million to the 12.4 million. And then the Water RE&amp;I Fund and the Water System Development, these are based on the water schedule for their capital projects as well. All right, and with that, sir, I'd ask that you open the public hearing, if there's no more questions.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, again, just to go over the ground rules, guidelines, three minutes per speaker, unlimited number of speakers, and again, you can speak on the budget, or if your comments talk about the millage rate, I'll let you talk about that too, but remember, this particular public hearing is just, is for the budget, so if you do bring up the millage rate, you might be diluting some of the effectiveness of your comments. So with that, I now declare this first public hearing open on the 2019 proposed budget, and those who would like to address the board, please come forward and do so, please let us know who you are and where you live. Okay, well, seeing none, I now declare this first public hearing to a close. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say period, so we still have.
I was just waiting my turn. It's nice to see you all. Happy anniversary, Commissioner Burl. You're welcome. I'm Tracy Rathbone. I am a lifetime resident of Cobb County, and I am the Executive Director of the Town Center Community Improvement District. I have lived in Cobb County all my life because my parents settled here and raised a family here, and I raised my daughter here. I am Executive Director of the Town Center CID because I came into this role, but because I believe in the difference that our county can make. And as I have been in this role, I think it's important for the community to understand that CID's are not government entities. We partner with Cobb County to do the work that we do every day. We could not do what we do in Town Center, in Cumberland, and in Marietta, without the work of the partners like each of you. With that said, we come saying we support the budget increases that are being laid out. We think that the work that has been done, both at the staff level and with the commissioners, is critically important to the long-term success of our county. Working most closely with the Department of Transportation in my role, I have seen the lack of staff that have been at the DOT for more than four years. What I've also seen is the lack of staff that have been added back to our parks and recreation through the work that we've done with the Town Center CID. I think it's important to note that through the strategic planning process, through the transportation planning processes, excuse me, we've looked at what the greatest needs in our county are. What we have heard from our residents is traffic, transportation. How do we get people moving from point A to point B? There's a variety of mechanisms in order to make that happen. We're talking about a lot of those. We have a number of transit studies going on, we're looking at surveys. However, there's also day-to-day issues that are not being addressed. When you look at just the maintenance with DOT, and you talk to the DOT directors, they just, last week alone, received 300 requests for service. Working five days a week to provide responsive service, that would be completing 60 work orders a day. They have a current backlog of 1,965 work orders, and with their current staffing levels, are only able to complete about 20 work orders a day. In the last few days, they have received requests for 49 potholes, 19 sinkholes, 27 catch basin issues, and this does not include the standard mowing, litter, and other low-priority issues in which there are 764 open requests. These are positions that were outlined in the budget, that are critically important to put back into the General Fund, to help us maintain our county at the level it needs to be. I think it's important that when we look at all of the positions, we also look at the transit piece as well. The jobs that are being proposed, I question, are those jobs, jobs that were never replaced when budget cuts occurred, or when grant funding was released? Were those jobs that were part of that, or are they part of the new plans? So, looking at making sure we're restoring what we had before, and not just necessarily looking at only, are they adding? So, making sure that we are supportive of all of the needs of our county to get us where we want to be long-term. I'm so sorry, my allergies are killing me today.
Unfortunately, Ms. Rathbone, your time is up.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments.
No, happy to, happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Ron Syfan. I did not address the tax increase, because the reality is, if y'all are going to approve a budget to spend $454 million, then it's, that's a 1.7 mils increase to cover that. In fact, frankly, I think you should be, when you get to July 25th, I think you ought to actually do it in reverse order and approve the budget first, and then, if you approve that level of spending, the tax, the millage rate is the millage rate based on what you decided to spend. My concern is, we're going from $403 million a year, 403 million in spending last year to 450, according to the PowerPoint we just saw, 454 million of spending this year. That's a big increase. You're kind of reset, you're hitting the reset button on spending. I get some of the items that are in there, understand, but that's a big number that you're going up in spending this year. So, just one example, the $8 million, eight-plus million dollars a year for the vehicle replacement. From the, from the retreat last October, is my understanding you've got $16 million of backlog for vehicle replacement. So I'm assuming that's a two-year number. You're going to replace vehicles over two years. I think Commissioner Oat had previously recommended doing that over four years. It's an adjustment that you could consider for $4 million, and that would be .15 mils that you, if you just spread it out over four years instead of two years, I get that you got to do the vehicle replacement. I get that. That's just one example. I'm not sure there aren't other areas where we wouldn't have to go quite this big of an increase in spending. This is just, this is hitting a reset button on spending to considerably higher level of spending, and that's going to carry forward in future years. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Would anybody else like to address the board on the budget? Seeing now, seeing none, I declare this first public hearing on the budget for 2019 closed. Deborah, how many people signed for public comment?
The reason I'm hesitating, you have about nine signed up, but one, two, three, four, five, six, seven have already spoken, and I'm not sure if they were intending to speak again.
Okay, why don't we take a short break, okay? Let's take a short break before we go to the public comment. And again, even if you spoke at the public hearing, you can still speak in public comment, so we're not, we're not trying to restrict anybody from getting their voices heard.
Chairman, might I ask, though, if somebody did already speak at the public hearing and does not wish to speak at public comment, if you could just let me know, so that we can take you off the list.
All right, we're back from our short recess. Now it's time for public comment, and I'll let everybody get settled here. Clearly, the coffee had a lot of stuff in it. All right, so what is the, what is the final count, more or less? I tell you what.
Perhaps 10 more.
That's fine, just whoever the first one is, will just come up here, remember, you have five minutes. You have five minutes for your comment, and with that, the first public speaker is?
Coakley Pendergrass.
Coakley, welcome, welcome back.
Good morning, Commissioners and audience. I want to take a few minutes if I, if I, if I can, and I want to speak on this, the issue of the Flex Bus. Now, and we've had, we've had conversations, and I want to thank you and Commissioner Cupid for coming out to the town hall that was out in Powder Springs, and we had an opportunity to share. Also, I want to know, or at least present, the fact that we know that the Atlanta Regional Commission is talking about, there's a pocket of funds that, that's available, Cobb County, Gwinnett, Douglas, and I'm, I want to know, how does that affect Cobb County? And will it affect Cobb County specifically to the Flex Bus? Now, we, a year and a half ago, we gave a proposition to the Board of Commissioners to look at setting up the Flex Bus as, as a dedicated line coming out of the three zones. And we passed this information out, spoke to DOT. DOT, first thing they said is, well, you have to show how we can set it up. Now, our specialists within the Georgia Community Coalition, Kenneth Howell, plus he gave his, he wanted me to share with you, he's, he's sick, so he couldn't be here this morning, but he wanted, wanted to give his regards. We have planned out, or shown, how we could set up dedicated lines coming out of, out of those, those three zones, and we gave, and set up the bus stops for the three zones. We want, our focus is that the buses would start at 5:30 in the morning, in the zone, does the route, the fixed route, in, in, in each of those, those zones, and bring the workers out of those, those three zones to the East Cobb Transfer Point. This system, when it was set up three years ago, three-plus years ago, with Fay DeMossamio in the previous, previous chair, they allowed the community to come in and, and discuss opportunities, or ways to, to assist those folks that are living in the margins, who don't have cars, don't have transportation, that are, that are in those three zones, how to get out and get to work. Because in, in the, the last millage lowering caused folks to leave, to leave the South Cobb area, because when they took the buses out, and they affected the bus routes, folks had no way of getting to work. Now, we're in a progressive, a progressive time. Folks are moving into Cobb, but we, we still always have those folks who, who are trying to better themselves, to get, get themselves, pull themselves up by their shoelaces, as has been recommended down through the years. Folks are trying. So you're going to find folks in, in, in those areas that are, that are hardworking, but they need assistance. If we, we have a working process. Now, I have to back up a minute. After we took the Flex, Flex Bus, because the community sat with that, we sat with the DOT, sat with the Board of Commissioners, and we took the idea of the Flex Bus. Somehow, the Board of Commissioners and DOT decided that instead- Somehow, the Board of Commissioners and DOT decided that instead of making it a fixed route, that they're going to set up a 14, 15-passenger bus to, to be a reservation system. In other words, people will call, the bus will come in and pick them out, pick them up, bring them out to the transfer point, passing individuals who, who, who are looking for a ride to get to the transfer point. What happened, that whole idea, the concept of setting up the fixed route, three years ago? It was, it was, it was, I mean, from the community point of view.
Mr. Pendergrass, thank you for your time.
Well, I thank you, but for the community point of view, I thought it was set up to fail. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is June Van Brockel.
Hi, I'm June Van Brockel from the Senior Citizens Council, and I already made, spoken about the millage thing, and I forgot to talk about transportation. Our seniors come from all over the centers, from north, south, east, and west Sea Freeman Pool to the North Cobb Center, and the transportation, unless they have transportation, they can't interact with each other or visit each other. And for seniors and other groups, transportation system is almost, is dismal almost to none. Today, I had a statement about the millage that we have on our board, a tax assessor, who was a tax assessor in New Jersey, and she couldn't get down here today because she can't drive herself, and she had no transportation to get here, to talk about how the tax is not taxing the property value of your property, but the tax value of the property, which people are not getting that information, and she would have been an asset to discuss that from the senior's point of view with the facts. So, I also want to mention, I think the commission, the chairman knows, and he's spoken to us about it at one time, the senior council, two years ago, set up Seniors Go, and it was a program where we subsidized rides for seniors all over Cobb County, and they were able to go outside of Cobb County. We invested almost $100,000 into that program, and we gave seven, we get, we did 7,000 rides. And it was, people had a number of rides to go on, like, for instance, they could go to the store, they can go to their doctor, or they can go take their grandchildren to the park. And because we couldn't get any more funding, we were unable to continue the program, and we still seek in funding from the county and from any other not-for-profit or profit group. And I just wanted to bring up that the transportation for us inhibits our ability to function well. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
The next speaker is Peggy Poehl. Okay, and the next speaker is Shelley Calico.
Thank you. I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to say I support the $800,000 budget line item to fund a partial restoration of Cobb County library hours, and also believe that we need to maintain the staffing of the full and part-time librarians at that, at the current levels. And I'm also in favor of the 12.8% increase in the general operating fund for the fiscal year 2019 budget to support libraries, art centers, parks, and the Cobb County Extension Service. Thank you.
I just wanted to make very clear, the $800,000 is really the, is a three-part program.
Yes.
For restored over three years.
Over three years.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Ellie Graz. Okay, the next speaker is Joe Webb.
Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners, again, on the, I believe we still have a spending problem in the county, and I know right now, you know, the county's doing, it's doing extremely well. The big, one thing that bothers me is a lot, is when I ride through Cobb County, running to these roundabouts, and those cost $1.2 million per roundabout. So, we need to, as I talked to Commissioners privately earlier, we need to sharpen your pencils a little bit more. I know those roundabouts are nice, and they help with the flow of traffic a bit, but when we're in a budget crisis like this, it's, it's something we really need to look at. Another thing is, we need to really take a look at the corporate cronyism that we tend to fall in love with to, for economic development. I know people move into Cobb County because of great schools, great place to live, and that's why I moved here, and we need to really sharpen our pencils and see if you can knock a little bit off of this budget and reduce the, if we can't stop the millage rate completely, if you look at compromising a bit to see if there's some more line items in the budget that you could go back and look at, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Karen Bremer or Bremer?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Karen Bremer. I am the CEO of the Georgia Restaurant Association. We are a statewide restaurant, we are a statewide organization that is the only not-for-profit that, that represents the restaurant industry here in the state of Georgia. We represent the industry in advocacy, education, and awareness, and we represent over 18,000 restaurants, almost a half a million employees, which is 11% of the workforce. We're the second-largest private sector employer in the state. And I'm here today to discuss item 15 on your consent agenda, which is the, the proposal to add a ballot referendum regarding what everybody calls the brunch bill, which is quite simply a piece of legislation that allows communities and citizens to roll back the time of alcohol service to 11:00 a.m. instead of 12:30 p.m. at the current time. The intention of this bill is obviously to raise revenue for communities. I'm understanding we need some more property, some more sales tax here, so that would be very helpful. And the legislation originated out of creating a level playing field for private businesses versus government buildings that are operated on the auspice of the Georgia Building Authority, such as the Georgia Dome, the World Congress Center, Lake Linear Islands. Those entities under Title III state legislation regarding alcohol are permitted to set their own time on Sunday, which has been 11 o'clock. This is why the battery cannot start serving until 12:30, because they are not operated by the Georgia Building Authority. So, respectfully request on behalf of the restaurant industry that you vote yes to put it on the ballot so that the communities and the citizens of Cobb County can have their voice be heard on the issue. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the time.
The last speaker is Mike Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mike Smith. I live in East Cobb County, I live in Mr. Ott's district. I wish he were here today, because maybe I need to be directing my comments at him. But I, having studied the issue to some degree for the last several weeks and having the opportunity to speak with the chairman today, I would generally rise in support of the millage change. Without knowing all the nitty-gritty details, I would like to say that if it impacts libraries, schools, parks, we have to choose between having slightly higher taxes. I believe the figure that was given to me just on millage would be less than $10 on a $150,000 house. Somebody has a million-dollar house, be less than $1,000, and I think that's a fair price to pay, if that's what it boils down to, to make sure kids who don't have easy access to expensive internet services and computers, who don't have the ability to join country clubs and be members of gyms, have adequate recreational opportunities, and that we have good-quality public schools, with all due respect to those who prefer to use private schools, we got to decide whether we want to have taxes of the price. I think it was, I don't know if it was Oliver Wendell Holmes or what Supreme Court Justice, since that's in the news lately these days, too. Taxes of the price, maybe it was Brandy Ice, for the living in a civilized society. I'd rather have good schools, libraries that don't have hours cut back, potholes fixed, police and fire and EMS properly staffed and available in an emergency, parks available for everybody than having, saving $5 or $10 a year on property taxes. So, I support you, Mr. Chairman. Somebody on the commission other than me needs to get to Mr. Ott. I wish he were here today. I think I've got a good ear in Ms. Cupid, and for the rest of you, well, you just heard what I got to say. So, I think we can work this thing out, and I support the proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And you bring up a great point. Commissioner Ott is at a conference today supporting the county in a terrific program that most people normally have to pay a high fee to get, to get invited to the convention. We've been invited because of what we've done with our, with our software programs here, so he's out there representing the county today. So, I know that if he was here, he would be here, but he can't be in two places at one time, and I'm glad he's out there representing this great county at this convention. So, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, that's it? Okay, all right. Let's go to the consent, and before, before we, I talked about Edmund remarks, Commissioner Burrow just pointed something out to me, I think it's pretty critical, on consent item number 15, which is the, the bill extending the hours for beverage sales. I believe the correct time should be from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. or is it p.m.? Is it p.m.? It is p.m.
They want to be able to go to midnight, right?
That's the area, that's the extra hours.
Okay. So, it, so it is correct in the, in the consent item. All right.
They already go to midnight.
All right, so it just extends the hours from before 12:30 up to 11:00 a.m. Okay, we're good. I just want to make sure we're good on that. I wouldn't want to pass something, and then they come back and say, what are you doing? You cut it by 12 hours. So, I don't think that was the intent. We have items 12, 12, 13, and 17, they've been requested by the staff commission to be polled, so as we go through the consent items we're voting, I just want to take a look at those, see which ones we're pulling. Yes, Commissioner Cupid.
Chairman, which items are being polled?
12, 13, and 17.
Okay, thank you.
12, 13, and 17. Because of staff. Okay, with that, I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Discussion, call the question. Passes four to zero. Okay, thank you. All right, now we're under the regular, regular agenda, and we'll start with the water system. Mr. Coler, your chance to excel.
Thank you, sir. Here this morning to request that you approve the water system's proposed schedule of rates, charges, and fees as published in the agenda book. A few points about this request. We've had no rate adjustments since January 1st of 2012. Since that time, the cost of water that we purchase has gone up about 25%. Our other costs have gone up about 12%. And for the past several years, we've been operating in a situation where our expenses have substantially exceeded our revenues. We've managed to survive this by spending down our reserves, but our reserves are getting very close to being depleted. We currently have the lowest rates in the metro Atlanta area, and if this schedule is approved, we will continue to have the lowest rates in the Atlanta metro area. If approved, the new rate schedule would increase the monthly service charge for a residential, average residential customer from $48.33 to $53.13, an increase of $4.80, and all other rates would go up by the same percentage. Included in this schedule of rates, charges, and fees is also a different way of calculating our sewer charges, our, would have been called impact charges, although they're not really, that anyone building a new home or building a commercial establishment pays to offset our costs of providing them with the infrastructure needed to serve them. This will have a very minimal impact on all residential development and all large development. However, it will make it a little bit simpler for smaller commercial properties that move into the system, and it'll be virtually revenue-neutral, but it'll be a much more easily-understood and easily-managed process. The proposed rate adjustment should get us back on a breakeven basis financially and will hopefully allow us to maintain our AAA rating. To put this in a little bit of perspective, even with the rate increase, for a little more than a dollar, you can still get 100 gallons of water withdrawn from Chattahoochee River or Lake Alatuna, have that treated to very, very high quality, have it delivered to your home where you can use it as you will, return it to the sewer system, we collect it, take it to one of our four major wastewater reclamation facilities, treat it actually to a higher quality than it was when it came out of the river or the lake, and then return it into those bodies of water for future use. Any questions?
Commissioner Weatherford, do you have a question?
No, you go ahead.
Could you clarify, you said we've been spending reserves, but you actually are talking about fund balance, correct? Because reserves are what are required by law. We haven't dipped into the reserves required by law, correct?
That, that's correct. We have a little different terminology on the water side, but what you're saying is accurate. We have not dipped into the mandated reserves.
So, it's really, it's what we, it's fund balance?
It's discretionary reserves in our world.
I've lost this argument with him, too. Just go with him.
Well, there's a big difference in the two. I mean, reserves are required by law, and those are things we don't dip into, and fund balance is what's left over after you spend your money.
Okay.
I mean, am I wrong or not?
No, you're right. These are reserves that are not required by law.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the SDF fees, you mentioned that slightly. Could you just briefly explain how that might help say a restaurant that was starting up? I mean, that's going to be a less impact than it used to be, correct?
In many cases, it will be. Historically, we have based the charges for restaurants specifically, since you raised that question, on the number of seats in the restaurant, and use that as a, as a, as analogous to the amount of wastewater that they would generate. What we propose to do now is actually base it on the size of the meter that they purchased to serve the restaurant, which controls the amount of water that they can use. I think in most cases, in many cases, this would reduce the charges to restaurants. In some cases, it could increase the charges if they choose to oversize their meter. But this is a system that's been used by maybe half the counties in the metro area, and we feel it's in everybody's best interest for us to go to this system.
Good. Thank you, and I, for one, appreciate the change there. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Burrow? I was going to let her know. I was going to let her make the motion, but I'll let you run the...
I'm just nodding with what Commissioner Weatherford says. There have been instances where we've communicated with restaurants that have been starting up, and they've had challenges with that fee. So I think that the rate proposed allows this to be an easier process for those who want to start a business here in Cobb County that serves food, to be able to do so in a way that's affordable. So I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Another thing that is recognized in this agenda item that Commissioner Weatherford pointed out was the ability for residents to be able to move to sewer if they need to, and that those rates could be prorated over a 10-year cost to those who want to tap into the county sewer system at a rate of $33 a month, and that's something that's not highly publicized. But for those that have utilized in the district, they have really appreciated having that opportunity to tie into the county sewer program in an affordable way.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm supportive of the item before us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burrow?
I have a little difference of opinion. I understand the way we do it now, and we don't have the manpower, or the way we're changing it to as a flat rate from counting seats, I agree with, but I don't think it should be a decrease of what we're taking in now for commercial, and we're putting an increase on homeowners. My main concern is, and Steve is very well aware of this, in 2012, you and I, and then county manager, Mr. Hankerson, came up with a five-year plan to reduce the water transfer incrementally from 10% down to 5%. In 2016, when we rolled back the village, instead of going to a 5% cap, it went back up to the 10% cap, and it's been there ever since. So my whole issue with this is, I know the Water Authority has increased their rates on us, and we've been absorbing that for years since the last increase, but as long as we are taking 10% of money generated in the water fund and transferring it to the general fund, I can't support an increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid, I'll let you carry the motion.
I move that we approve the Cobb County Water System's schedule of rates, charges, and fees to become effective on September 1st, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. Passes three to one with Commissioner Burrow in opposition.
Thank you very much. This is a really big deal, and we appreciate it.
Thanks for your hard work, Steve.
One question. When will this go into effect?
September 1st.
For the residents, it'll go into effect September 1st at the same time as the streetlight moratorium begins.
Great, thank you. All right. Next, we have transportation.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Today, DOT, we only have one item, and it's to approve project number 2806, task order number one, to the 2018 master task order contract with Calix Engineers and Consultant, in an amount not exceed $92,830 for engineering design of school zones improvements at Favor Road and Wendy Hill.
Okay, since Commissioner Cupid, this is in your area, would you like to carry the motion?
Sure. No, I'm not trying to be funny. I know I've had conversations with DOT about incorporating some elements of a pedestrian safety program for some of our students here, which I'm hoping could still be incorporated, but this agenda item does tie that dollar amount, so I'm nervous about approving this and seeing some of those improvements take place. I'm nervous about doing it, and I know we're under time pressure, Michael.
Yeah, we're going to actually, once we start to design, we have really tight budget on this project, so we're looking at the crosswalks as well as the wider sidewalk, incorporating your...
You're looking at it, or it will be incorporated?
We, it's, we'll look into it. I mean, at this point, we have a set budget for the project, and the additional elements would put us over budget, so, but we'll...
So what does looking at it mean?
We'll look to see if we could reduce the cost for the crossing, maybe use like paint or thermoplastic for the crossing instead of a stamped asphalt.
Okay.
So that could lower the cost.
Okay. I'm going to approve this agenda item because I know time is of the essence for the school to be built on time for the opening, and just ask that we really make a sincere, good-faith effort to incorporate some of the improvements that we talked about with the school.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. With that, so moved?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? Call the question. Passes four to zero. Thank you. All right, Fire Department, Chief Crider?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Cobb Fire is here to seek authorization to use 2016 SPOS funding of 3.3 million for the build and relocation of Fire Station 1, and authorize the appropriation of additional funding totaling 1.1 million from the Fire Fund's fund balance to Fire Station 1, 2016 SPOS funding project X1021. Pursuant to the Cobb County 2016 SPOS, Cobb County Fire Emergency Services was authorized to proceed with several capital projects. One of those projects was the replacement of Fire Station 1 in Mapleton. Fire Station 1 has reached the end of its useful service life and has presented multiple significant repair, maintenance, and environmental issues. 3.3 million was initially approved in the 2016 SPOS for this purpose, using land presently owned by Cobb Fire. Due to increased construction costs from materials and labor, this cost has risen significantly. The estimated increase is an additional 1.1 million needed to complete the facility construction and additional operating costs. These projects are approved, these projects as approved will enable Cobb Fire to continue with industry best practices and provide Cobb County with the most effective and efficient department possible, enhancing service delivery to the public while enhancing facility safety for personnel. Cobb County Fire wishes to utilize the remaining 1.1 million for this purpose from the Fire Fund's fund balance to commence construction. Future agenda items would be brought for board approval as required during the rebuild and relocation of Fire Station 1 project. If 2016 SPOS revenues exceed projected budgets, Cobb Fire requests reimbursement of this excess amount back into the Fire Fund. Cobb Fire recommends that the Board of Commissioners authorize the use of 2016 SPOS funds in the amount of 3.3 million for the build and relocation of Fire Station 1, authorize the appropriation of additional funds in the amount of 1.1 million from the Fire Fund's fund balance to the 2016 SPOS Fire Station 1, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. I just had a quick question before I made the motion. If we, you're talking about a refund from the SPOS, that would be something that finance would have to approve, correct? I mean, we don't know, have we done this before, I guess?
Yes, there has been a precedent set already, and it'll all be based on whether the, once the SPOS reaches its maximum...
Right, I'm familiar, but...
Then, yes, I think the precedent has been set by another department that we're allowed to do that.
Okay, that was the other question. I didn't realize that was... Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, sir.
You have a second? You have a second? Any discussion?
Yes, thank you. Yes, since this is District 4, this has been a long-awaited project, and just want to thank the Fire Department for looking at how we can fund the full cost of the project.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, strike. I'll call the question now. It passes four to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next one is, are you the county attorney now, too?
I'm filling in for Ms. Dance. Her ankle's bothering her a little bit, and actually, I was the one that kind of started this agenda item. So I thought I should probably finish it, Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, sir.
The other half also practices law, so that does, in a sense, make you an attorney.
I wore a lawyer suit today. Good morning, Ms. Chairman. The purpose of this agenda item is to request that the board authorize the issuance of allocation letters to three subcontractors that were associated with the SunTrust Park construction. This is a program that's authorized by the Internal Revenue Service, specifically their code section 179D. What the program allows for are subcontractors that implement energy-efficient measures into government buildings to be able to claim a tax deduction to their federal taxes. I want to specify, and you'll notice in the printed agenda, there is no impact to the Cobb County taxpayers. This is simply a way for subcontractors that participated in energy-efficient buildings to obtain a tax deduction as it relates to their federal income taxes. Would also like to point out, this was a program that had a sunset provision. It expired in 2017, so this is probably going to be the only time that this would be brought forward to the board. But again, want to emphasize, there is no impact to Cobb County. It is simply us certifying that these three subcontractors participated in and designed and implemented the appropriate construction measures from an energy perspective. There were three subcontractors that responded to our direction that not one, but any subcontractor that was involved in the energy-efficient construction be allowed to approach the county after we provided that direction, that was Ms. Dance and I, to the original inquiry, which was Inglis and Stubbs, a local electrician, electrical contractor here. They contacted all of the other subs for the project. There were two that responded, Barton, Milo, and McKennys. Based on our direction, we divided it by three. They were agreeable to that, and that's what they will submit to the federal government and the IRS specifically for their tax deductions. Based on that background, Mr. Chairman, we are recommending that the board authorize the issuance of the allocation letters to the three eligible taxpayers in connection with Internal Revenue Code section 179D, tax deduction for the design and construction of energy-efficient buildings for the construction of SunTrust Park, and further authorize the Chairman and Finance Director to execute the necessary documents, sir.
Commissioner Cupid, you had a question?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So with that, I make a motion to approve as presented. The second? Any discussion? Call the question. Passes four to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rob. So we have some appointments that I have the pleasure of announcing here. I'd like to announce the reappointment of Bryant McDaniel to post 29, Elizabeth Scott to post 23, Francia Brown to post 5, Scott Russell to post 32, Camry Roberts to post 4, Petra Young to post 6, Makiva Sullivan to post 26, Terrence Norman to post 34, Trevon Moore to post 9, and Greer Gallagher to post 23, and the appointment of Shane Evans to post 13 to replace Trina Bosteller to the Workforce Development Board, and these appointments will expire on June 30th, 2021. We have no further public comments, correct, Ms. Dance? Okay, so that, I believe now, we'll do the commission comments, and then we'll go into our two public hearings for their development boards. All right, with that, I'll start with Commissioner Burrow first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd first like to say thank you to the Skip Wells Foundation. Saturday, I participated, not on a motorcycle, but with the motorcycle ride that left Sprayberry and went up to Cartersville in memory of Skip Wells' foundation that awards scholarships to Sprayberry High School students. If you remember, three years ago, on July 16th, Marine Lance Corporal Skip Wells was killed in Chattanooga in a terrorist attack on a recruiting center in Chattanooga, Tennessee. In the interim, he has been honored by Congress, our state legislature, and by this board. We have a park named after him in my district, which previously was the Bells Ferry Park. He grew up going to that park, and I just, we felt it was a great way to honor him and preserve his memory of what he gave for, to serve for our country. So I'd just like to say thanks to all the Patriot Guard riders and attendees on Saturday for making the trip, and thank you to Skip's family. I think Brad has a picture for us on this next thank you. Okay, the white dog there is our latest adoption from Cobb County Animal Shelter by veteran Michael Caudell and his family. It's a three-year-old German Shepherd named Flash. So most of you know about my program for veterans free adoptions from the Cobb County Animal Shelter, and this is our number 58 through our Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets program. So congratulations to Michael, and we wish you much happiness and success with your new best friend. It looks like he has another husky there, too.
Sure, that's a dog.
I know. He's pretty big. Just a reminder, early voting is underway. You can vote from now till July 20th at the specified locations, and we do have some printed off in the back there to take with you. There are several runoffs July 24th, so be sure and exercise your right to vote. Also, in August, August 25th, we are, the Board of Commissioners is partnering with the state Veterans Affairs Agency to honor and welcome home our Vietnam veterans who did not get a proper welcome home more than 50 years ago. So we are having a ceremony at the Civic Center on Saturday, August 25th at 2:00 p.m. at the Cobb County Civic Center, sorry, and we invite you all to attend, but most importantly, there are forms in the back. If you know of a Vietnam veteran, we'd like to honor them, and the state will present them with a certificate and a lapel pin for their service in the Vietnam War. So please, please come if you can and help us spread the word to all the veterans, organizations, and churches so that we can get a huge crowd there to honor them. And last but not least, I'd like to wish my husband, Dave, the love of my life, and my number one supporter, a happy 20-year anniversary.
Really? Wow!
Yeah.
That's a... Commissioner?
Weatherford? No. Thank you, sir. Just wanted to remind everyone that on Friday, July 20th, from 10:00 in the morning till noon at 4331 Burnt Hickory Road in Marietta, we're having a Kemp Family Park property preview. This is one of the properties that we purchased with the Parks Bond, and it's approximately 90 acres, and it's a beautiful piece of property that includes Allentuna Creek, rolling pastures, some hills, Civil War area that we're still working on, and there might be a cowl too there. So come out and take a look. Parking is limited, but it'd be nice where you're walking shoes, and you can walk this property and see what we're going to do. We're in the process of trying to do a master plan to see what we can do with this property in the future, but one of the goals is connect it to Price Park, which is another property that we purchased along Allentuna Creek, and so a master plan would be a trail that could connect those two along Allentuna Creek that could be biking, riding, maybe even horseback riding. It's July 20th from 10:00 to noon at Kemp Property, so that would be a great event if you get a chance to come out there. So that would be a great event if you get a chance to come out there, especially all those that helped us work toward the Parks Bond and purchase. And you'll think, you'll find this is beautiful. It actually backs up to Harrison High School, and it's a great place and connects there. So we look forward to that for many, many years to go, and it's going to be a great day. And then finally, I would like to thank the chairman and staff for the town halls. As hard as they were on staff and everything, I think it's been one of the most open things that we've done here in the county, and I appreciate your hard work and your effort. And there is no one that can't say they don't know what's going on now, and we all know, and I appreciate it. It's been hard on all of us, but it's something that needed to be done, and I think the fruition of that is everyone has got the idea of what goes on, both for and against, but at least they have the right facts. And to me, the best thing to do to make a informed decision is have the right facts. Then you decide which way you want to go, but at least you know the facts, and I appreciate all your hard work, sir.
Commissioner? Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Weatherford and I have the same cheat sheet today because I wanted to thank you as well. I know Commissioner Weatherford has been to some of the hearings, and so have I, Commissioner Burrow, and I have never seen someone subject themselves to such feedback on our county budget before, but you are unmatched in your efforts to educate the public about the budget. And even though you and I may have differed on that, I certainly think that your heart in that is admirable in wanting the public to know about what we're doing and why we're doing what we're doing. So thank you, and thank you to staff because you guys put in a lot of time and hours and heart to preparing for the hearings and attending. For the public, thank you for coming today. We have two more public hearings. One is going to be on Tuesday, July 17th, at 6:30 p.m. And our final one, where we'll make a decision, will be on Wednesday, not Tuesday, Wednesday, July 25th, at 7:00 p.m. We've moved our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting to that Wednesday due to the runoff that will be held the day before. So do not come here the fourth Tuesday. Again, we will meet on the fourth Wednesday for the Board of Commissioners meeting to vote on the budget and to address any other agenda items in our, in our commissioners' agenda. Naval House Amphitheater, we have two great concerts that are coming up. The South Cobb Arts Alliance will continue hosting their Candlelight Concert Series on June 13th with performance from Redhead Diamond, and the band will perform some of their classic rock hits, and doors will open at 7:00 p.m. Parking and general admission are free, however, if you like a table, it's $60. And you can visit southcobbarts.org for more information. And the next concert I am just excited about, the Isley Brothers will be coming in performing. The Isley Brothers. I grew up with, see, my parents having that on the, you know, they used to have records back in the, the needle would come and you'd hear the music come out. Yes. I remember. I wasn't itty-bitty when I was here. I was here. But you can enjoy a live concert on July 14th, and the doors will open at 7:00. The show will start at 8:00 p.m. Our Public Services Director, if you're out there, can you give the commissioners a hug up so we can get a table? Just asking. Parking is free and tickets start at $50. Now, my youngest son will be excited about this. Our Public Services Agency, they will have two more opportunities for movies for families around the county. The next movie will be Peter Rabbit, and that will be on July 14th, is my son's favorite movie, and this will be at Seven Springs Water Park, and the festivities will start at 7:30 p.m. And Seven Springs Water Park is located at 3820 Macedonia Road. And finally, we will kick off our movie's finale with Coco, and that will be Thursday, July 26th, and that's just a beautiful movie if you haven't seen it, and that will be at the Art Place in, at Mountain View. For those of you who are a little bit more old-school, there'll be another movie night. This is at the Aviation Wing of Marietta, and it's also being sponsored by Absolute Quality Interpreting Services, and we will have a closed caption showing of Top Gun. I remember that, too. And that will be. It'll be on Saturday, July 14th. You can go, I don't know, you can't see both Peter Rabbit in this, you've got to make a choice. But this will be from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00. Yeah, Peter Rabbit or Top Gun? I miss heart. Yeah. Want to score points with the kids, it's all about Peter Rabbit. And that will be from 6:00 to 10:30 p.m., and bring your lawn chairs out for that. And just more good things going on. Feel free to sign up for any of our newsletters at cobbcounty.org/ourlastname. Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to end on a positive note. It's my understanding that all the young men in Thailand have been rescued from the cave. So that's really remarkable, and just looking at the map of what these people had to do to rescue these kids is truly remarkable. That's some true heroism there, and I know that we're gratified that they're all out safely. Sadly, one person lost his life in trying to rescue them, but I think that every one of that family knows that he did the best that he could for the right reasons, and our hearts go out to that family. So again, prayers have been answered, and with that, sure, absolutely.
Sorry, I forgot to read one more announcement. The Osso Community Task Force is having their annual back-to-school celebration on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the South Cobb Recreation Center.
Thank you for bringing that up. So with that, I believe we adjourn first, and then we call, go back into session for the hearings, right? All right, so with that, we're adjourned. And let's take a. Let me get organized here. Okay. We're on. So the first one is the hearing to conduct an appeal hearing for Stephanie Bartolero regarding the denial of application for a Cobb County alcohol permit to serve alcohol in unincorporated Cobb County. And with that, let Mr. Hensley make the opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, commissioners, Mr. County Manager, Madam County Attorney. As you indicated, we do have two hearings. These are alcohol work permit appeals. For the record, I'm Sam Hensley, Jr., representing the Business License Division. The first hearing is, as you indicated, for Ms. Stephanie Bartolero. She had filed an application for an alcohol work permit. This was reviewed by the Cobb Police Department Regulatory Services and Permits Unit and the Business License Division, and it was administratively denied. The application was denied due to a violation of Code Section 6-206. Before I get into the substance of that denial, Mr. Chairman, I do not believe that the applicant is here in attendance today. I'm going to sound for her now. Is Stephanie Bartolero in attendance at this hearing? Ms. Stephanie Bartolero. We have attempted to contact Ms. Bartolero and have been unsuccessful. What I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, is to have my witnesses come forward and indicate that she was given proper notice of the date and time of this hearing, and also that we have made attempt to contact her this morning to let her know that the hearing was going forward. And once we do that, then I'll have a recommendation for the board.
Could you give us a second?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. All right, so call your witnesses, and then why don't you give us? Again, I'm not.
Okay. It's been my recollection that in times past when we've had people not show up at hearings before, there's been any testimony of anyone. We've just given them another opportunity, delayed the case. So that's my recollection of past experiences when we have absences, and I think that it does prevent, it presents a disadvantage for us for this to move forward, and I don't know the circumstances behind why they're not here.
Well, I guess my question is, do the witnesses, are they going to testify as to why she's not here today?
Correct. We would not get into the substance of her application because she's not here to respond to that or to cross-examine witnesses and that sort of thing. This would only, to be put on, to put on the record that she was notified of the date and time of this hearing today, that we have attempted to contact her today to make sure she knew to be here, and then the board can, at your pleasure, handle this however you want, and I'll make my recommendations and offer the alternatives that you have.
Okay, I'm sorry, Chairman, I thought you were holding the key.
No, I just, I just, again, since the witnesses were here, I just, they made the time out of their lives, I'd at least like to show that respect to them by having them give us their testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'm going to swear on anybody who may be testifying. I have two witnesses here. If you'll raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding? It should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. If so, say, "I do." Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would like to call Ms. Alicia Webb, please. Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you state your full name for the record, please?
Alicia Webb, Cobb County Business License Assistant Manager.
Okay. And what are your responsibilities as the Assistant Manager of the Business License Division?
Regulatory compliance with alcohol health spas, I work in conjunction with Sergeant Smith, Police Department.
Okay. And are you familiar with Stephanie Bartolero, who I believe had filed an application for an alcohol work permit in Cobb County?
Yes, sir.
And how are you familiar with her?
We have been in communication a good bit since she originally appealed in April for the License Review Board, and I've had communication with her since then. She filed the appeal to be here today on June the 15th.
Okay. And just to backtrack a little bit, you did receive the application, which I believe was first reviewed by the Police Department Regulatory and Services Permit Unit, rather, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And did they make a recommendation to your office about what to do with this application?
The application was denied by the Police Department, and the applicant requested that it be brought before the License Review Board.
Okay. And did that occur, did the License Review Board review this application?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe there was a denial, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Or an upholding of the administrative denial might be the better way to phrase that.
Yes.
Once that occurred, did Ms. Bartolero request an appeal of that decision?
Yes.
To this board, to the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
And how is that handled? Did you send out a notice to this individual as to the date and time of this hearing?
Yes, sir. She filed her appeal on June the 15th, and then we sent the letter notifying her to appear at the Board of Commissioners on June the 25th.
And how was that letter transmitted to the applicant?
Via U.S. mail and email.
And did you receive any kind of response from her?
No, sir.
Okay. Have you had any communication from Ms. Bartolero since that time?
No, sir.
Okay. And did you attempt to contact her this morning?
Yes.
And were you successful? Was this a phone call, or how did you attempt to contact her?
I attempted to call her, and she did not answer. I did not leave a voicemail.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Webb? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Like to call Sergeant Bonnie Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning. Could you state your full name for the record, please?
Bonnie Smith.
And where are you employed, Ms. Smith? Or Sergeant Smith, I should say.
Cobb County Police Department, Permits Regulatory Services.
And what are your responsibilities in that role at the Permits Unit?
We regulate employees of licensed establishments that require alcohol service permits along with pawn shops, health spas, things of that nature.
And are you familiar with the applicant, Stephanie Bartolero, who's the subject of this hearing today?
Yes, I am.
And how are you familiar with her?
She applied for an alcohol service permit and ultimately was denied administratively due to the code requirements, and she went to file the appeal to the License Review Board.
Okay. And so you're, once that occurs, once you determine that there's a disqualifier in their history, do you then transmit that information to the Business License Division, or how is that handled?
We have a meeting with the applicant, and we give the applicant the procedures. They're filling out an application to file the appeal. That's done in our office, and they actually submit that appeal form along with a questionnaire online to the License, the License Division for that appeal.
And again, you were in attendance, I believe, at the License Review Board hearing on this matter, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was denied at that time, correct?
That's correct.
Have you made any attempt to contact Ms. Bartolero since that time in regard to her appeal to the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, I tried to call her this morning, and it went to a voicemail, and she did state her name on the voicemail, so that told me I had the right number on her application. And I did leave a voicemail to tell her the reason for my call, that we were here, wanted to verify if she was going to come today, and I gave her my cell phone number and my work phone number, and I have not received any contact back from her.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Sergeant Smith? Okay, thank you.
In light of that testimony, Mr. Chairman, there are a couple of options here. As was indicated, you, of course, can continue this case if you so desire. I'm not recommending that, but that's certainly within the purview of the board. The other options in this matter would be to either make a motion to dismiss this appeal or, in the alternative, to uphold the decision of the License Review Board. That would effectively end her application for a work permit at this time, and we would not be holding another hearing in regard to this, but that is certainly up to the board to choose how you want to handle it from this point forward. But I believe we've shown that there's been notice, we've attempted diligently to contact the applicant to make sure she knew to be here, and there's been no contact with her since the filing of the appeal to this board. So those would be the options, I think, that you would entertain at this time.
Thank you.
I'll start with Commissioner Burrow, and we'll go down the, go down the board here.
When you say there's been no communication, you mean we've sent the proper notice via letters and phone calls and emails, whatever process, but she hasn't responded, is no communication from her?
That is my understanding, that there's been no discussion with the Police Department or the Business License Division after the transmitting of the official notice, which is sent by regular mail and email to the applicant, informing that person of the date and time of the hearing before this board, and also the procedures that are used at this hearing.
Okay. So when she filed the appeal to come before us, did she have legal counsel?
I do not believe so. I don't think she's had an attorney at any point in this process.
Okay, so it was all on her own?
And I have not been communicated with or contacted by any attorney in regard to her application.
Commissioner Burrow Weatherford.
Thank you. I think in light of the fact that we've communicated or tried to communicate with her today, and she hasn't responded, I agree with Mr. Hensley, and I think we need to uphold the License Review Board recommendation of denial.
Commissioner Cupid.
My sentiments are still the same. I'm in favor of at least continuing at one time, and just don't know what had occurred today or what has occurred. You don't know if there's an emergency or anything, and I just feel like giving her one opportunity does no detriment to this board and allows her and us the opportunity to fully hear the matter before us with her being present.
Yeah, my concern is, when we send the letter, do they, do we ask them to respond to the letter saying they've acknowledged receipt of it, or do they sign for the letter, you know, through Or do they sign for the letter, you know, through the post office?
My concern is the same with Commissioner Cupid. I'm not saying that that's... There is a remote possibility that something's happened to her, that, you know, she's ill or she had to go somewhere, and she just hasn't had a chance to respond. So that's my concern, is that we want to exhaust all options. I don't know if we can legally do this or not, you know, try to use our means to see if she's still around somewhere. I'm not sure if that's breaking any privacy laws to do that. But my main thing is, is that I would like to make sure that there's nothing that's happened to her that will prevent her, preclude her from responding to our obvious attempts to contact. That's my major concern.
Absolutely. And that's clearly a possibility that is occurring. And at the License Review Board level, we will generally do that as well. The difference in this case is there's more formal notification about when to be here, and there's been silence since that time. Whereas prior to the License Review Board hearing, she was very actively in contact with the Business License Division.
Well, that's what bothers me, is that because she was active, and she did say she wanted to appeal, the fact that she would now just go completely silent does not reflect someone whose act it was concerned about trying to appeal the issue. That's what strikes me, is being different.
Sure.
Commissioner Burrow.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we hold it till the next morning meeting, I guess, August? And try to make contact with her? And, you know, if she still wants to appeal, we have a date set for her. If she wants to withdraw, she can do that, and we can take it off the calendar.
Right. We may not need to have a hearing anyway if that's the case.
This is Chastain Road. It's my district, so I'll be happy to make the motion.
Okay. So...
Absolutely.
Sure. I think that's appropriate.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we continue this case to our next morning meeting and try to get in touch with the appellant and advise her of the new date and time.
You have a second? Any further discussion? I'll go ahead and call the question. Pass is four to zero.
Thank you.
Appreciate you working with us, Commissioner, on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second hearing, as indicated on the agenda, is also for an alcohol work permit application for Mr. Anthony Chambers. Again, for the benefit of the applicant, I'm Sam Hensley, Jr., representing the Business License Division. Mr. Chambers' application was reviewed by the Cobb Police Department Regulatory Services and Permits Unit and the Business License Division, and was administratively denied due to a violation of Code Section 6-206. Specifically, our evidence will show, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Chambers had two DUI convictions within the five years immediately preceding his application, which is, as I indicated, a violation of Cobb Code of Ordinances, Section 6-206. Those convictions, our evidence will show, were on August 31st of 2015 and April 10th of 2017. Mr. Chambers did appeal that administrative denial to the License Review Board, which heard this matter on June 21st of this year. And at that time, the LRV voted to uphold the administrative denial. Obviously, Mr. Chambers has appealed that decision to the Board of Commissioners this morning. He is in attendance. I have reviewed the procedures that we'll be going through today. So that is my initial presentation. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I will swear on the witnesses, everyone who will be testifying in this hearing.
Okay, please.
If you will be testifying...
If you'll be testifying in this hearing or believe you may be testifying, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding? It shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. If so, say, "I do." Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Detective Jason Arsenault.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you state your full name for the record, please?
Detective Jason Arsenault with the Cobb County Police Permits Unit.
And what is your position with that unit, sir?
I'm a detective, responsible for the employee alcohol applications, reviewing them when they come in, also for pawn shops and precious metal dealers.
And how long have you been in that position, sir?
Since about November of 2017.
Okay. And are you familiar with Mr. Anthony Chambers, who is the individual that is the subject of this hearing today?
I am.
And how are you familiar with him?
Mr. Chambers came in to apply for an alcohol permit back on June 14th. I actually processed his application there at the window, and also discussed with him the appeal process for the License Review Board, and handled all of his paperwork at that time.
Okay. In that paperwork, did he indicate any matters that would be disqualifiers under the Cobb Code of Ordinances for him being granted an alcohol work permit?
He did. Mr. Chambers wrote down on his application where we asked for their criminal history. He wrote down the DUIs that he had been convicted of, and actually told me before we even finished processing his application that he would probably be denied. He knew that was a chance and wanted to go ahead and get that going.
So he was honest on his application and did put down these disqualifying offenses?
Correct.
What were the dates of the convictions for those DUIs?
We have his first DUI. The conviction date on that was August 31st of 2015. The second DUI arrest conviction was April 10th, 2017.
Do you also conduct a criminal background check in addition to the information that's provided on the application?
Yes, sir.
Were there any other disqualifying offenses that you found on that background check?
No, sir. His actual convictions were actually out of the state of Georgia, and Mr. Chambers had already provided... He provided me with all of his disposition paperwork showing when the conviction dates were.
Okay. So the DUIs occurred outside of Georgia. What state were they in?
Both were in Florida.
Okay. So you would not have found those had he not disclosed those on the application, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So he was, again, honest and divulging to you what his background was?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At that point, what did you do? You may have stated this, but for the record, you... What's your procedure once you realize that he is not eligible for a permit?
Basically, I had a discussion with him, going over the disqualifiers from getting a permit, which he said he was aware of. And if it was going to be denied, he wanted to go ahead and conduct the appeal. We processed the application, once reviewing the paperwork, looking at his conviction dates. It did come back as a disqualification under the ordinance. So I took him back. We had a further discussion about the process of filing the appeal for the License Review Board, went over everything there with him, and signed off on the paperwork to do the appeal.
And do you transmit a recommendation to the Business License Division in regard to the denial of this application?
We do, yes.
And is it the Business License Division that actually officially notifies the applicant of the denial, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have any questions on the detective? Okay, sir, thank you.
Does the applicant... Do you have any questions you'd like to ask? Thank you. That's the only witness I have, Mr. Chairman. I'll dispense with having the Business License Division testify that they did, in fact, send a notice. I think everybody agrees we're here, and he got the notice, so...
So now I will provide Mr. Chambers the opportunity to come and address the board.
Good morning.
Morning.
Am I close enough?
You're fine.
Sure. Okay. So I'm here. First of all, thank you for seeing me. I know that you all have a busy day ahead of you with all... As many people's opinions as I saw earlier today. A lot of opinions. I just need a job. So I had a kind of a bumpy couple of years, decided to do beveragesing as a coping mechanism, have since learned better coping skills because alcohol destroyed my life. And restaurants are my vocation. I've never drank on the job. I've never been able to drink on the job and do what I do. I started as a dishwasher, worked my way all the way up to restaurant management. Now I'm a GM candidate with four different companies. Presently, I work at Chewy's. I was hired on as a server. Right now, I'm just bussing tables and washing silverware because I can't do anything else legally. I wanted to be honest and forthright with everything, which is why I talked to Detective Arsenault immediately upon applying. I had made contact with the Police Department before I had moved here. I wanted to move here for a fresh start. My mother had passed away. She was in Florida. I had taken some time off of the management game to help her out with some medical stuff. She passed away suddenly. I couldn't do Florida anymore, decided to move here. I have a great support network, a couple of friends that invited me to stay with them. I live with them for free right now. I'm very thankful for that. But I think my mom would want me to get back into it. I worked very hard for the career that I have. And it's okay if I have to earn it back. That's fine. Don't, you know, if your decisions affect me negatively, it's just temporary because, you know, like I told the detective earlier, me and Jesus are buddies. So I'm sure I'll be fine either way. This is part of my journey. I'm not a big fan of the camera situation right now. Pretty nerve-wracking experience. I can clarify the communication aspect of the email-mail correspondence, but once I got the schedule of this hearing, why would I continue to just, "Hey, just seeing how your day was"? Just seems like a weird after... I don't know what happened to the girl. Anyway, sorry, I'm super nervous. Let's see. So a couple of questions were asked to me previously at the other appeal. I believe I answered them sufficiently, but since none of those people are here now, except for the sergeant here, I will answer them for you, hopefully. Do I have a support network? Yes. What have I done to change my life in the positive? I've rededicated my life to God. I'm probably going to cry. I'm very sorry. I've rededicated my life to God. I was able to get baptized at a church locally, Revolution Church in Canton. It's a pretty great church. Little mega-churchy for me, but they're super welcoming. Let's see. Relocation. I don't have any of the people, places, and things that they teach us about in the AA meetings. I go to AA meetings. I have a sponsor. I was able to sit down and have a personal conversation with a couple of gentlemen who had pretty enormous criminal backgrounds to pray with them, to ask God into their hearts. So I think that's a pretty big deal. Got a lot of emotional growth from my time in the clink. I'm a lot tougher than I thought I was, regardless of the PTSD waterworks that are going to probably precede this proceeding. My sobriety is pretty positive. My last drink, there seemed to be some confusion about the last time I had had a beverage due to all of the administrative numbers that are thrown at you on a moment-to-moment basis. But my last drink, or drug of any kind, I didn't do drugs, but you just have to say them together, I think. My last drink was 6/4, 2017, so I've been sober since then. So lots of prayer. Let's see. I did this... I said the sponsor thing. Sorry, I don't have very nice handwriting. A concern that was posed to me by three of the representatives that I don't believe were Commissioners was they would be concerned if I was in a restaurant that served alcohol, I would have a drink. I don't know. Wouldn't I have a drink if I got turned down for getting a job? I didn't have a drink then. Wouldn't I have a drink when my mother passed away? I didn't have a drink then either. Also, I live right next to a convenience store that sells conveniently packaged alcohol. Very strange. I didn't drink then either. I haven't. So statistical evidence, though, if we're going to go with facts, I've never done it at work. I can't do what I do with numbers and P&Ls and budget reviews and forecasting, et cetera, beverage, because it makes me slower. So I've demonstrated my continued sobriety and the maintenance that it entails. See, this is the last page, and I'll hopefully stop rambling. I believe that I've satisfied all these concerns thoroughly, though at the end of the hearing, there was a vote of three to one to uphold the administrative denial, to use the attorney's language. There was one officer that was on my side. He also believed that, or he demonstrated by his comments, alluded to, we should take into account the amount of growth that I've had versus the amount of time they perceived had been since my last drink. He mentioned that the things that you all look for to overturn a denial, I had accomplished. And then last, I'll wrap this up in this filthy, disorganized bow. Before you deliberate, just try to think about a time that you might have needed another shot. Although I trust, you know, God over all of this, so I'll still be fine even if you guys still say no. But this is part of my journey. I didn't have to do this. I could have went to Marietta Square. We don't, you know, have to have a permit, which is weird. Marietta's in Cobb County. Very confusing, right? I could have gone to Woodstock. I could have gone to Fulton. But I decided to do the weird tasks that would probably be more emotionally stressful to make me want to drink. Seems counterintuitive, but it's part of my journey, right? So anyhow, thanks for your time. Sorry about the shaky voice. I'm good. That's... There... Somebody's cellphone.
Okay. Well, nothing else, you'll always have a job in improv.
Okay.
With that, the board will have some questions up here, okay? So just relax. We're just like you. We're just people.
With a camera, too. Thank you for your service, by the way. Your lanyard is four inches tall on the screen.
Well, we all have to show all our lanyards now, I guess.
Yeah, let me get mine.
You got to compliment Commissioner Burrow, her North Carolina lanyard.
I do enjoy the pearl necklace, also the sergeant's bun. I didn't want to... I didn't want to go... I don't know what... It's 2018. People are sensitive. I don't know what to do with my life.
Just relax.
You can watch this. It's recorded on Cobb County.
Oh, that's... Okay.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Of course, please.
Do you currently live in Cobb or just work in Cobb?
I live on Paris Ferry Road, in between Delk Road and some other road.
Okay. And do you have a valid driver's license?
I do not.
Okay. Will that be restored once the...
I still have a couple of hoops to go through to get that, but I don't foresee that in the foreseeable future. I have been Ubering because...
That's close.
Well, you have some bus challenges, but that's fine.
Okay. I was just confused as to where you live, but you've completed all your sentence for the two DUIs.
Absolutely, thoroughly.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. This has been very entertaining, and I've enjoyed your presentation, sir. So I think it speaks highly of you that you were very honest and disclosed it to the PD, and that you are on your journey where you should be. And it seems to me, besides being very articulate and forthcoming, you have the right attitude to do good in this world. And I, for one, feel like I'm a fairly good judge of character, and I'm leaning toward giving you another chance.
I appreciate that.
But... And this board has done that in the past. We hear things that come out that are a whole lot different than they're on paper. And we've denied them, and we've approved them. And we've denied them and we've approved them. And I think that all of us here take each person on an individual basis. So if, for some reason, all of us do agree on that, you know, I'll challenge you not to let us down and that you continue what you're doing and get where you need to be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kupin.
Ditto.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Sure. Jack, go ahead. I just wanted to say a couple of things. After your, after your first DUI, did you join AA?
No, I, no, sir, sorry. I was previously in a non-alcohol-related car accident, broke a bunch of bones, and I was awake during an eight-hour surgery. So I got a bunch of feelings I didn't know how to deal with, and that's why I started drinking. So after my first DUI, it's still, I didn't really learn anything from that, to be honest.
Okay. That was my question. One thing, if you had been on AA and then relapsed.
No, I.
But so the second time, you went on AA, so you have your one-year chip.
Right. It was a big deal.
Okay, absolutely. I don't think people realize the first year's the toughest because there's so many chances to relapse, and the fact that you got through this says a lot about you. And I also want to echo what Commissioner Weatherford and Commissioner Kupin have said here. This is a very compassionate board. We appreciate honesty. We appreciate people trying, we've been giving them a hand, hand up, not a handout, we've said it a lot of times here. And the fact that you didn't have to go through this but still chose to do it says a lot about how you want to work with us.
Thank you.
So again, if we approve, if we move to approve, you know, your liquor license, you're also taking our reputation with you.
Of course.
So I just want to remember that every day, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, so thank you. I think, there's some more questions, so you can relax.
Well, I have a few, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, if you don't mind, yes. And first of all, I do want to offer my congratulations as well on your journey.
Thanks.
You do seem to be heading in the right direction. I'm going to be a little bit tougher on you than the board so far.
Okay.
Because you're going to hear my little speech in the form of a question here.
Fair enough.
I've heard a lot about how this has affected you and your struggle with alcohol. And quite frankly, you do have quite a struggle with alcohol, do you not? Is that a fair statement, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do you understand that in addition to your well-being and your health, that this board's primary concern is the health and safety of the citizens of Cobb County? Do you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Do you understand that you are the last line of defense? If you're serving alcohol, if you're given the privilege of an alcohol work permit to serve alcohol in this county, to an underage person, to maybe somebody who's already had too much, you're the last line of defense from those people getting alcohol and then potentially going out on the road and injuring or killing somebody. You have been through that experience yourself, what an automobile accident like that can be, can be like. Do you understand that that is your primary job, is to keep that from happening?
Yes, sir.
Do you understand you cannot get in trouble for not serving somebody alcohol?
I understand that, and I'm willing to raise to this commission an additional attendance to another meeting if they have further questions.
Let me clarify. Are you still on probation for the second of these offenses here?
I am free and clear, sir.
Okay. The second offense actually constituted a violation of your probation of the first offense. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you got your time revoked, probation was revoked, is that correct?
That is correct.
How long did you spend in jail?
Seven months.
Okay. So that was, I assume, quite a learning experience as well.
That is also correct. That is where I was able to get involved with the prayer call and became the prayer leader and speak to those gentlemen that I spoke of earlier about God.
So you don't think that your proximity and access to alcohol as a server in a restaurant is going to tempt you or cause you problems in any way?
I will answer that thoroughly. No, I do not, because alcohol at the restaurant could cost me my job getting arrested, whereas I can purchase it legally as a grown-up everywhere. So no, I don't think that that would cause me jeopardy.
And is there any other occupation or job that you could get to support yourself that would not involve the service of alcohol?
If I had to do it, I would absolutely be able to do it, of course.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Burrow.
Did both the DUIs occurred in Florida? Is that where you served jail time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So how long have you been here in Cobb?
I just moved here about a month ago, a little over a month ago.
Okay. But your involvement with church and all that is here now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
My sponsor is here as well.
So before, you were living up in Canton?
No, sir. We drive to go there, and since I don't drive, I go where the car goes.
Oh, I see.
And they, the first Sunday that I was able to attend Revolution, they had a spontaneous baptism situation. And I had initially petitioned the jail to allow me to be baptized in jail. That went nowhere. And so I felt like, hey, I gotta, I gotta get this done. So that wasn't related, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I have one other question, but it's not really for you, I don't think.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Chambers? All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time today.
Do I sit?
Please, yes.
Okay. Also, don't forget the phone, whoever. Okay.
So, Mr. Hensley, I believe Commissioner Burrow has a question of you.
Yes. When we, when we asked about the License Review Board's decision, it was my understanding that both of these cases were denied unanimously. But I think Mr. Chambers said that when he went before the License Review Board, it was three-one?
It was a three-one vote, to my recollection.
Okay.
Yes.
So it wasn't unanimous denial. Okay. Because we didn't, we didn't get that count correctly.
Okay. And just as a reminder, too, these are de novo hearings before this board, so you start all over again and make your own evaluation of the evidence.
Are there any further discussions, questions, closing comments? For Hensley, you have any?
So just to point out one other thing, if this application is granted today, then he will have to reapply for next year, for, in December, for, to renew it for another year. This will only carry him through till the end of the year.
It's one year from the date of the application. It's not like the licenses for the establishments.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Because people come and apply throughout the year, just depending on when they're trying to get a job.
Right. Unlike business license.
Correct.
They have to do every calendar year. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Chambers, would you like to make a closing comment? Do you have?
Thank you all for your time. I'm okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Hensley, I believe you're the, you're the last, you make your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only real concern is that these were fairly recent offenses. By his own admission, has an issue with alcohol, so he's going to have to really be guarded with not only his own behavior but following the rules. That's the mantra that we repeat over and over again in these hearings. We look for people who know how to follow the rules in the service of alcohol so that bad things don't happen in our community. So I will just, with those comments, leave this in the sound discretion of this board. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in the application of Mr. Anthony Paul Chambers to overturn the ruling of the License Review Board and grant his server permit for a period of one year from the date of his application.
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? Call to question? Passes four to zero. And, Mr. Chambers? All right. Don't let us down. Date of the application. The one year's from the date of the application, that's what the motion read, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. We're adjourned. We never fail to amaze ourselves.